I call the order of the February 6, 2025, regular meeting of the Whittier Port and Harbor Advisor Commission at 6:00. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we begin tonight's meeting, please note that digital copies of tonight's meeting packet are available on our website. A QR code is provided just outside the door or in the top left corner of the YouTube video. Open your phone's camera to scan the code and you'll be able to easily access the packet. Madam Clerk, can we please have her call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Loane, absent. Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Yelverton?
Here.
Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here.
And Ms. Loane just walked in.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Okay, everyone's here. Citizen comments on any agenda item except those scheduled for public hearing are welcome at this time. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Please note, this is not a time for dialogue. It is a time for you to speak and the commission to listen. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed in? So moving on to approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Need a motion, right? Please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Is there any objection to approving tonight's regular meeting agenda and consent agenda as presented? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Loane?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Yelverton?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The motion passes and the agenda and consent agenda are approved. On tonight's consent agenda is the approval of the December 5, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
Okay, and no presentations this evening. I do not have a report. Vice Chair, do you have a report?
Neither do I, Chair.
Try that again.
No report.
Hey, Trey and Dory, can you hear us?
I can hear you and I can hear Trey.
I saw him say yes, but I didn't hear him say yes. And he's nodding to that.
I could hear him.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you, Trey.
I'm good on my end.
Nick, are you able to hear me?
I guess they can't hear us, huh?
I all of a sudden can't hear them either.
There they are. Okay, Vice Chair.
I do not have a report, no.
Harbors master board, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, sir. It's been a last month, I think we've. I've attended about thirty-five meetings, it seems. One of the big. Probably one of the biggest we've been dealing with has been the waterfront economic development plan. That thing has really taken off. We're in a lot of information gathering right now. We had meetings with stakeholders, we had meetings at Anchorage, we had, that was very well attended. I think we had people that signed in was a little over sixty-five folks. But I believe there's probably more than that there. We had about twenty-five show up here in Whittier. And we got some really good feedback. So just yesterday I got a consolidated meeting notes from Linda, the project manager with Corvus Design. And I'm kind of going over those notes and all that stuff that they compiled from those meetings. And it was very detailed, so probably take me a few days to dig through that. Plus, there were some other things in there that she wanted to confirm was that she had copied it down correctly. So anyway, we're moving along with that. I'm putting forth to this next council meeting to purchase some digital power meter readers for our harbor. It's going to be about an eighty thousand dollar price tag on that. But all the analog power readers right now are starting to fail in the harbor at all our pedestals. So the only way to collect power for those meters that are failing is to just kind of go over an annual or a. Oh, yeah, an annual usage on those meters for the vessels. And I just kind of average out what the cost of power is. This, the new core digital readers are plug and play for what we currently have. The only thing that's different about them is they actually Wi-Fi, talk to each other via Wi-Fi and report back to a mainframe computer in the harbor that would give us real-time power usage at every pedestal. So that's how we would base our. Our. Our cost or our billing. One cool thing is if one of those boxes happens to fail, it skips past and use uses the next one as a repeater. So we can continually get information and we would also be notified if that if that box went out. So I'm looking to use MRF funds for that and major. Replacement repair fund for that. And then we would do a change order for G and A float for the new ones, which will add about another. I'm guesstimating about a hundred dollars per unit, if I remember correctly. So more on that. In an effort to work on providing a float for fish cleaning. I got a just got a price quote from PND, Bill Harris. And Bellingham Marine got together, designed and gave me a price quote all out the door. It's about ninety-seven thousand dollars for a fifteen by twenty concrete float made specifically for a fish cleaning station. My thought was to put that below where the old one was underneath the harbor master's office. Not a perfect spot, but it's where it was before and it seemed to get a lot of positive usage there. With the thought that was we were moved forward with the economic development plan. And, you know, we'll start figuring out different areas and different options or we might be able to put it up on the up in the. Up in the lot somewhere else. But anyway, just want to, it'll kind of solve a couple of problems. It'll get all the fish slime off the the gangway area, the harbor. It will create a space for our maintenance shack, which is going to hold our firefighting and. Pump out cart at the bottom of the gangway where the fish cleaning tables are now. And it'll give much better space to vessels that come into the harbor and can tie up alongside. And it'll also shorten the amount of time that it takes our guys to dump the pens. Because right now they have to work all the way out and around the harbor and now they could just jet right out. Take about half an hour instead of an hour and a half. So I'm looking to try to secure some funds from the state for that. Through the fishing recreational fishing access fund. So hoping that I might be able to free up some cash. I've got a message into the coordinator for that program, so more to follow on that. But it is also something that's on our CIP plan. So. Yeah, other than that, I've just been trying to keep from blowing away. Haven't had a ton of snow. Staff put in a heated water line that runs over to. X-ray float for folks that have been asking, they use the harbor all year round. They're looking for an op, an opportunity to get some fresh water. So that seems to be holding out pretty well, even with the minus temperatures we had last week. It's still continuing to move water, so we're we're encouraged about that. Other than that. Blowing away. Any questions?
Commissioner Goldstein?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the harbor master, just out of curiosity here, the fish cleaning facility is on the west side of the gangway now. And and my my picture is that the facility for the pump out and also for the fire. Fire suppression would be on that and co-located with the fish cleaning facility there. The fish cleaning facility is not going to be on the east side, I guess.
No, I'll actually move the fish cleaning tables to this new float.
Yeah.
And we'll, they'll be completely out of the way, so.
And.
They won't be co-located together.
So the fish cleaning facility and the firefighting and the pump out will be on the same float, right?
No, 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 the house, the the shack, for the lack of a better term, will sit where the fish cleaning stations are now. And those tables will move to this new float if we can secure the funding for that.
Okay, and the new float will be?
On whiskey float where the old one used to be, right below my office. You know where those two float, those two piles are right in the middle of the runway there and between X-ray and whiskey? There's that large area that doesn't have a finger because they put the fish cleaning station in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see it on on the drawings.
So so that's actually on the east side of.
No, it's on the west side.
It's still on the west.
Yeah, it's right underneath my office window.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
On whiskey float.
Interesting, okay, so that's. Okay.
Yeah, if you look at page twenty-three, you'll see that large gap there on whiskey float. It would go, it's going to go there.
So it's actually on the on the on the water?
Right, yeah, it's a float, yep.
Yeah, and I think eventually maybe we can get something where that other. Other launch ramp was or the other gangway was where we have that.
Yes, yep, there's a bunch of thoughts for that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Comments, questions? Next on the. Go ahead, Trey.
Harbor Master Board, is it, is the fish cleaning float primarily a float? Does it have any cover ability to add a roof? For shelter cover?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Just one more quick question. I assume that water will also be available at that site, just just as it is now. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Next on the agenda is resolutions. First resolution, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, adopting commission priorities for twenty twenty-five. Is there a staff report for that? Not really. It is what it is, we have it.
Yep, that's right. We, based on the input that you gave at the work session in January, we compiled the attached resolution. And if you see errors, please feel free to make amendments on the floor and we can correct the resolution.
Is there a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing done, can we take the rule? Madam Clerk?
Voting on the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, adopting commission priorities for twenty twenty-five. Mr. Carlson?
Aye.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Yelverton?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Loane? Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one is approved.
Okay, moving along, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two, adopting the ninety-five percent design of the Whittier Small Boat Harbor Phase Three Rebuild the Project. This one probably has a report.
Pretty short and sweet. I think you've all had a chance to review it and take a look at it. I know I had a couple of questions off offline about a couple of things. One of them was the. Let me. One of them was, Mr. Carlson inquired about on page seventeen. You'll note the water lines and the fire line, the red line, running off to the A float. And the stand pipes on the west side. There were some issue trying to run them on both sides and on the inside primarily due to the fact that the. The support for the pile, the piles are inside on this one. Didn't allow for protection of the water line, basically. They would have had to be on the outside of the dock and that would not have been appropriate. So that's why you see both feeds on the outside, outboard side of the dock. The other question was about triangles and the supports. I've got an email into. The design team now to see what our options would be about either. Well, we have to, on G floats, you're going to have to have it on the pedestal side. We know, we know that. So there's some opportunity that maybe we don't have to have it on the non-pedestal side. I'm waiting for a reply. So I know that's, that was a question that was raised. An addition that we made to A float was LED lighting. That is indicated on, let's see. On page fifty-five. You'll note on A float, there's three. Lights now on A float. And one of the reasons was because the lighting from the pedestals alone would not have been very effective because there's not many there. And if we've got bigger boats tied up there, you wouldn't be able to see it. You wouldn't be, it'd be very dark. So that was one of the complaints we had during the W, one of our public meetings with the WEDP was that it was really dark on that side of the harbor. So then you'll note there's four stanchion lights on H float. So that was an addition because there wasn't anything there before and there's no piles down or no, you know, there's no pedestals there. So there's four lights on that. And I think those were the big updates to what we had. Standing by.
Commissioner Goldstein?
Yeah, a couple of questions, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking at at these and of course fifty, how many pages? Sixty-some odd pages was a lot to go through. And I was trying to picture a lot of this stuff in my head. And then I thought, screw it, I'll just wait until the Port and Harbor Commission meeting and ask the questions there. But I'm I'm looking at the Gulf and Hotel fingers and the floats. And and I'm seeing that we have the pile basically in the center on on the H float, for example. And and then we have the triangles. And I think, as I understood, you were going to check and see about that. But I'm 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 thinking that. That really doesn't allow a lot of space for a vessel to get into that area. It probably, and I'm just wondering, how how many feet does that knock off of the finger? Usable space. Obviously stern in for a square stern, not going to be a good option. And.
Well, it's no different than how it is now.
So basically they would have to go bow in.
Yeah, I, so on H float right now and G float, the piles on that float are on the east side currently, right? The ones that hold G and H in place are on the east side of the finger or on the east side of the main.
Okay, and if you could just refer me to the correct drawing here.
Standby.
I'm on seventeen, but that's just the fire and utility.
Yeah, you want.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, we actually.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We actually have a pile plan.
I got you, yeah. So so I'm, again, I'm.
So page, page fifteen. Is the actual pile plan, P one oh one.
Oh, fifteen?
Yes.
That's where, yeah. Trying to head over there before.
So that's where the existing piles are going to be, that's where the piles are going.
And currently, there's triangles on everything?
Yeah.
On G and H? And just thinking back way before we ever had a any percent plan. I think we we recognized back then we were going to get served a like-for-like plan. We were going to be able to ask questions along the way, but we were looking at a like-for-like plan, just just thinking back to the beginning.
Yeah. And again, I'm 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 looking at, for example, on the on the west side of Hotel and the west side of Gulf. We have both the pile, every other. Set of fingers. And then we also have the triangle in there. And I I think if I'm not mistaken, some of the floats on that or fingers on Gulf and Hotel don't really have the pile set in the center.
They actually have more piles than there will be, if that makes sense. So we'll be able to accommodate more boats that might be a little longer with this plan than what we currently have. Because you're right, well, right now, there's. If you go to page, what was it, Kyle, twenty-five? Well, there's the one that shows the existing pile plan. Yeah, so if you go to twenty-three.
Page twenty-three.
Go to page twenty-three, go to H float. And on the east side, you see the little black dots? On the east side?
Yeah.
Those are all currently installed piles.
Right.
So when we, when we do H float, when we replace it, we're going to replace it with just one, two, three, four, five piles.
Gotcha.
That are on the west side.
West side, right.
Right, so we'll have less.
Right.
So we'll impact less boats, if that makes sense. Now, if we, I agree with what you're saying, Dave. I I hear you a hundred percent, it's just, it's, it's the design that. That we have. And if we can get rid of the triangles, if I can find out if we can get rid of one, then we'll, you know, kind of like what we did back in day on C and D float, where they got rid of the one, the non-pedestal pile or non-pedestal triangle, thank you. You know, that. That should suffice, I. You're always going to have an issue and we can't make it perfect, we can sure try. But there's always going to be an issue with. Somebody, somewhere.
Yeah, in my, in in my head, I'm I'm kind of balancing out this past desire to do more with the current plan to replace. And then the impact on on the folks who are who are using these, especially where the pile is in there and the triangle is in there too, which basically minimizes on on those particular two. Slips, you know, in in between the two fing, in in between the two fingers. It 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 limits. The length that can be used for the vessel. And I'm just wondering, is that? How 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 much space?
I I don't know, Dave, I'll have to find out. I'd have to ask.
Like.
I couldn't tell you, I'm not going to say fourteen inches and it be thirty-seven or be twelve.
Yeah.
So.
What I'm, what I'm, I'm thinking of here is this is designed for like a twenty-four foot vessel.
Small boats, yeah, this is all twenty-four foot stalls.
And and.
Twenty-eight foot max.
We, oh, it's max, so we're using the ten percent over.
Yeah, with the ten percent over, it's a twenty-eight, basically a twenty-eight foot stall.
Yeah. And I'm I'm just wondering if that's going to, like a twenty-eight foot vessel in one of those slips with with the triangle and the and the pile.
Well, I would suggest that we're going to affect far less vessels with the rebuild than we currently do. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because right now we affect one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen vessels with that piling, right?
Yeah.
And now we're going to go to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So we'll, we'll affect less vessels, if that makes sense. And if we can get rid of the triangle, it's not going to be an issue.
Yeah.
But I can't promise you that either.
Yeah. Okay, and and so if we figure, there's probably. Okay, and, and, uh, so if we figure, there's probably, on a twenty-four foot, uh, vessel, probably have a, a beam of about eight feet.
Yes.
Uh, and, and these, these, um, uh, the distance across is, um, I think if, if we have probably four feet of separation between the vessels, that's the plan, like in, in, in one stall with space for two vessels. So you, you're basically taking out sixteen.
They're twenty feet. There's twenty feet between fingers.
Right, so what I'm saying is eight and eight is sixteen, and then you have an additional four feet, which means two feet on one side, two feet on the other side.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, and, and again, uh, all of these have power and, uh, water, right?
Gulf, yes.
Gulf.
Hotel, no.
Hotel doesn't, doesn't have anything.
No, well, it'll have water.
Water.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Okay, and I guess the final question, um, is if we do decide to reconfigure this at some point in the future, will this be easier to deal with, the same or tougher to adjust this?
Explain reconfigure.
Money-wise. If, if, if we wanted to, for example, something goes in at the head of the bay and we have recreational vessels at the head of the bay, and we wanna utilize this space, space for more, uh, vessels that don't easily, um, transport over land. I'm, I'm just wondering, I, would it be about, I mean, just given today's dollar, not what's gonna be in the ten years in the future? Because we all know that's not gonna go down.
So, and I think that's why we went with this triangle business to begin with, was somebody made a decision years ago that they wanted to reconfigure the harbor at some point. And this would allow us to remove a finger, move fingers down, still connect to the concrete. So, yeah, I, I mean, from what I'm seeing here, um, I mean, we're, we, we didn't, personally, every harbor I've ever been to, we didn't do this triangle business. We built the plan. We, uh, everything was hinged in place. Um, that's how we connected to the main walk. All the fingers were connected via hinges. So they're rigidly mounted. These are more adjustable, I guess. So, yeah, I, I mean, you couldn't do anything on the inside, but you could certainly do something on the outside. You could, if you wanted to.
I, I would guess too, that, that because of the lane itself, the width of the lane, uh, that's, that's going to be an issue too.
Sure, the fairway always is gonna affect what you can put in there, yeah.
Yeah.
And then again, if, you know, if you wanted to put forty-foot boats down there and you'd have to put, you know,
Yeah.
You have to put piles on the end of your fingers and.
Yeah.
You know, so I think what you see is what you get. And, you know, I fill these, I fill this H float up all summer long. You know, uh, with boats, I mean, you've seen them, thirty, thirty-two footers down there, you know? They stuff them in wherever they can get them, so.
And, and, and again, I think my, my problem here is in, in a vision for the future versus replacing stuff that needs to be replaced now because of safety concerns. It's just way, way, way overdue. And, and thank you for, for working so hard to get the funds to make this happen. So I'm kinda balancing the two. I think, in my mind, the, the need to redo this, um, and I, this is a pretty, pretty complete diagram here on this ninety-five percent, says that safety and accommodating the existing infrastructure just barely outweighs trying to redo this whole thing and establish something at the head of the bay, which I guess is not, not in the offing anytime real soon, but.
Let's work on one project at a time.
Yeah. Okay, and, and maybe eventually what could happen if we did, um, something with these floats and fingers at the head of the bay, it's possible that some of these could be transported to the head of the bay, right?
Sure, anything's possible. Yeah.
So we wouldn't have to buy these again. And they wouldn't be sitting out on the, on the dry land for fifteen years, rotting.
Certainly wouldn't be my desire.
Okay.
I was just trying to look and see if I could see a, get a measurement between that pile and that transition. And I, I, I don't have my, I don't have a.
Slide rule?
I don't, yeah. And usually they'll have that reference measurement and. So I'm hearing page twenty-three, from the pile to the, no, it doesn't have that. No, I was looking for the measurement between the pile and the, uh, which I thought might be indicated on twenty, on page twenty-nine, but I'm not seeing it. But I'll probably be able to provide that tomorrow.
Any other questions for Harbor Master Board? So I guess we're moving on for a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, we take the rule?
Voting on the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two, adopting the ninety-five percent design of the Whittier Small Boat Harbor Phase Three rebuild project. Ms. Loane?
Yes.
Ms. Yelvorten?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two is approved.
Okay, moving on, other new business? There's, uh, none. And then next up on the agenda is commission comments. Starting at the end, uh, actually, here, I'll do, I'll do what great people do. Is there anybody online, Commissioner Hill or Commissioner Yelvorten? Do you have anything to add tonight?
Nothing from me.
No, I'm good.
Ms. Loane? Mr. Carlson? Commissioner Goldstein?
Just, just one, uh, quick question. Any, any further update on the head of the bay with the Word of Bill and the Corps of Engineers?
Funny you should ask. I got called today from Kimberly Graham with, um, Army Corps. And she asked us to resubmit our letter of interest, so they can submit that to, to let them know that we're still interested. So we will be doing that this week.
And one, one final question, anything, uh, with Smithy's Cove, any, any change in the ramp area there planned?
Funny you should ask. Um, our new city manager was going through files and found something from two thousand and five. It was an entire construction plan. Um, I haven't had a chance to go over it, but she sent it over to me and said, you might wanna take a look at this. So, uh, it's all part of the W E D P. I mean, really, we're, you know, we'll gather, there's a lot of, one of the things we, we realized here during our last meeting, um, you know, there's no less than five user groups there. Um, you've got five user groups that all have not just a small interest, a vested interest in that space. So I think we really need to, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a decent plan, a good plan, when we kinda get all these folks together.
No triangles.
One more question, and this probably gonna be prefaced or answered with a funny you should ask. As far as the DeLong Dock, I'm, I'm just wondering about its use this summer. Do you have any, any clue as to whether that will be used by uh, vessels for Whittier seafood or?
I don't know of anything with Whittier seafood. Um, I do know that Copper River's still interested in, in operating there. Copper River is also, uh, they're gonna have a herring opener again this spring. So they'll probably, during the springtime, Copper River will probably access, uh, City Dock. But, uh, from what I understand, they'll be back to operate on, matter of fact, they actually got, they've already paid for their permit for DeLong Dock. Um, I don't have any other interest from any other parties at this point, other than Copper River. Um, I'm not sure what may come of the Whittier Seafood's property. We did get notice that, uh, that it's going up for auction, I believe. It closes on the fourteenth. I believe the fourteenth of this month for bids. Yes, um, so, um, I did have a visit with the eight thirty-third Transportation Wing with the Army, uh, several weeks ago. Um, they, it's their second trip here to discuss DeLong Dock usage. Um, you know, I, I'm trying to dance with as many partners as I can, uh, to try to figure something out, because in reality, we've got maybe another two or three good, to me, good, safe years left on that dock, um, before we really have to start thinking serious about what we're gonna do there. So, thank you.
I guess, um, that's moving on to me then. The last one for, um, Commissioner, comments. I just wanted to thank you, Harbor Master Borg, for all of these, um, the balls that you guys have up in the air, you and your staff and administration and stuff. I've been watching, um, prior to being a commissioner for a long time, and now being a commissioner here for a little while, there's a lot going on. It's pretty exciting to have to have all these questions for all these things that are going on. So I just wanted to thank you for your guys' efforts. I know it's not gonna probably be perfect, but it's gonna be so much better to your effort. So thank you for that. Any other comments or discussion? Suppose we can skip past, um, Commission Administration response to citizen comments? Oh, we do have one. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my name's Kyle Loane, uh, speaking as Deputy Harbor Master. Just wanted to give a quick update. This last weekend, we had the second annual, uh, dive cleanup by, uh, put on by Dive Alaska. We kind of, um, take a backseat and just kind of facilitate them, just make sure that it's safe. We've got no motors running in the harbor. But, um, this year was real windy, a lot colder. Uh, I think they had a lot less, uh, volunteers to carry stuff than they did last year, but, um, we still got a huge, a huge pile of, of trash. I, uh, I've been told I've been given access to their Google Drive where they have all the pictures, so I'm gonna try and get some stuff to our clerk here and, and maybe put something together for a post. But, um, uh, and they said, hey, this is like a sixteenth of the stuff that's down there. So they wanna come back next year. I think they, uh, historically have kinda circled the state, but I think they get a lot more participation this close to Anchorage. So, I'm happy about that. I think, uh, I think it's a good thing that they wanna come back and they can keep cleaning stuff up. I dropped a socket today, so. Oh, and thank you to, uh, our E M Ts and, and fire guys for being down there as well. I know Commissioner Carlson was down there watching the, watching the shenanigans. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I was, I, as I was listening to that, I guess, uh, it's worth commenting on that. And I think from a, like a user group standpoint, uh, Harbor Master mentioned user groups in Smithy's, but that's such a great example of the involvement you get from being so close to Anchorage, just like we talk about for recreational users, kayakers, boaters, fishermen, people that go hunting, whatever. And then conversely, just exactly how much effect that has with change in the weather and the turnout you could have for said event. So it's very cool to see. Okay, then, uh, if there's no other business, no further business, meeting is adjourned at six forty-two.
See you guys. Thanks for coming on.
Thanks, guys.
All right, see you guys. Take care.